Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the city council meeting. It's so great to see so many of you here. I'll call this to order and I'll ask the attendance to be noted. We have two folks for the open forum. First, former council member Susan Rosenberg. It's always a pleasure to see you here.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Guttell. I'm here tonight wearing the hat of president of the garden club. And what I want to tell you about tonight is that this Saturday, the Richfield Garden Club is going to be holding their annual plant sale. And if I could have someone help me with the --
Put it down there.
What are you going to put it?
Thank you, Tom.
All right. Yeah, the plant sale is this Saturday at the Bartholomew House, and it's between 9:00 and 3:00. And I would just encourage people to come because we -- all the plants are bee-friendly. And what that means is that we don't have any pesticides on any of the plants that we're selling that would be detrimental to bees. And one of the best parts about being there is that you can get a lot of advice, warranted or unwarranted, from a lot of the garden club members that are there because they, you know, we know best. And so you can -- if you can -- will come and have questions, we'll be right there to answer you and answer your questions. The other thing I just want to bring up is that the Richfield Garden Club Plant of the Year is the Garzania. Now, the Garzania is a very, very tolerant plant. It's tolerant of drought, it's tolerant of abuse, and it's a great plant to have. And it's the Richfield Garden Club Plant of this year, and it's -- we're selling it in multi-color packets. So, again, please come to the Richfield Garden Club Plant Sale. We partner with the Richfield Historical Society, and they allow us to come every year and use their space for our sale. And we promise you'll have a lot of fun when you're there. So, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Susan, for coming. Next for the open forum is Rob Foreman. Again, if you come up and state your name and address, you have about three minutes. Yeah, your name and address, please.
Rob Foreman. Address is 7500 Morgan Avenue South.
And you'll be asked to sign in when you're done? This should be a --
Here?
Yeah, after you're done. Go ahead.
Okay. Three minutes?
About.
Okay. Just coming here with a particular issue, neighborhood-related. Have pursued it on many other avenues and haven't found resolution. So, I'm coming here for advice and help from you folks. Involves the ball fields at the Richfield Middle School, specifically the ones that are out on 75th Street that don't seem to have sufficient backstop fencing behind the plate and a lot of balls that come into private lots. That involves people having to come and retrieve, and that creates the -- you hate to say it, but it involves a trespassing issue, and then that spills over into a number of other issues where there's behavioral issues with profanity and things like that, shouted at neighbors, myself and my neighbors. There's other issues connected to that, with the ball games coming there. You know, we don't have problems with the games being there, it's just primarily that backstop issue that has been addressed on many different levels. And the reason I'm here is because I've gone to many people, school officials, superintendent, athletic director, city manager, police, with no resolution. It's kind of been left unattended. So, just that's in a nutshell what the issue is, however much more detail you'd like from me.
Council member, you have a question?
I wasn't clear. Is it at Donaldson Park or is it on the school grounds?
School grounds.
It's the school.
Right.
And maybe we could have staff talk about that afterwards, but thank you. Thank you for bringing this to attention. Staff?
Mayor, and yeah, we can respond to that later. I just want to make sure the folks in the audience understand that what Mr. Foreman is talking about are not city ball fields. These are ball fields that belong to the school district. They're the two small softball fields that are adjacent to Morgan Avenue, and so...
And so, we have the balls going over there, and maybe we could start talking. And we have really great relationships with them. Maybe we can figure out something.
Sure.
I'm sure we can talk to park director and see what we can do.
If I may, Mayor. Mr. Foreman has talked to me on several occasions. We tried to set up with Superintendent Slaughterback to go over and walk and take a look at it. The reason that -- and one of the things Mr. Foreman suggested to me, and I think it's a realistic problem that does involve the city, and Mary, you may have some comments on this, it's kind of one of those issues if we're aware of a risk, and the risk being balls leaving the field, going over, crossing 75th Street, approaching into his yard or something else. There's cars driving by. If a kid is chasing the balls, gets caught, gets accidentally hit by a car or something.
Agreed.
There's a very real possibility that there's going to be a negative impact on the city because it's a risk we're aware of. We haven't taken steps or worked with the school district to correct that. So, I think that that does intimately involve the city in working with the school, trying to find a resolution for Mr. Foreman's problems.
City manager, since I'm the liaison to the schools too, and we have a change in superintendence, and I think that might be a little bit different too, perhaps we can revisit this and figure something out. I'm sure we can come to a resolution that works. And I know sometimes it's funding and timing and getting things up, so we will continue work on this. Thank you for bringing this.
Can I pose a question, tail end of that, and then get out of here?
Yes. Go ahead.
Since council member Elliot Knowles has been brought up a number of times, promptness would be a helpful word to suggest. There's just been a lot of time that's passed with the issue left unaddressed.
Okay, this is the first I've heard of it, so...
Understood, understood. So, anyway, thank you.
Okay, but thank you for coming, and thank you for being concerned, especially about those kids. I don't want them hit on the street either. Appreciate that. At this time, I would ask everybody to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask approval -- oops, that goes off. Approval of the minutes of the special city council work session of April 22nd, 2014, the special concurrent city council and HRA worksheet of April 22nd, 2014, and the regular city council meeting of April 22nd, 2014.
Second.
Kidding. You guys are on Johnny on the spot. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. I got it in bigger print now, guys. I can see this. This is tough. Presentations tonight. We have three presentations, but actually only two. We are going to put off the presentation regarding the National Public Works Week until next council meeting because a person couldn't be who won the great poster contest. We want them here. So, first, we have a presentation. I'm going to hand it over to council member Sandal.
Thank you. And I would like to ask the Queen -- I'm sorry, the Miss Richfield ambassadors and junior ambassadors to come up so I can present them with some certificates. Royalty, as they are known, the glitter section here. We have Jacqueline Castro in appreciation for her participation in the City of Richfield Annual Fourth of July Activities as a 2013-2014 Richfield Junior Ambassador. The Richfield City Council hereby extends their sincere gratitude. Is one of you Jacqueline? Okay. We also have certificates for Jayla Inteson, and this is Jayla. And also appreciation certificates for Jerish Kovach. Kovak. Kovak. Okay. And a certificate as well for Brandy Har. We have a fifth certificate for DePica Pokarol, who is not here this evening, and I will pass this along to one of you to make sure that... And I did want to share with the people at home who may have missed... Do you recognize anybody in the picture, girls?
Easter.
The Easter Bunny is in the picture. This was at our Saturday event where we had the Easter egg hunt for the kids, and our ambassadors were present, and they are present all over the state. They have done many, many parades and events. And maybe we'd ask our two senior ambassadors to tell us a couple of the things they've done, if you'd like to come around.
Well, I'm going to start off with some fun things we've done, but not all the events are super serious. We've been to some where you eat spaghetti the fastest that you can, which is super fun because you just eat it and you don't think about it. We've had corn festivals, but there's some where you just enjoy making children smile or going to a Cambridge coronation where you're a princess and they get to hang out with you as a princess, and you dance and you have fun. I know those are some of my favorite events, so I'll let you hear.
One of my favorite events was the Rockford River Days Festival where we were able to go on rides with their carnival with our crowns and gowns on. That was an experience I'll never forget. Another really fun thing that we did right here in Richfield was at the Wood Lake Nature Center, we entertained a bunch of young, jumpy little kids as we danced in the -- they had Halloween. It was a Halloween walk that they could walk through the nature center, and that was really fun.
And thank you for all your efforts today. And I'm going to have you move around because we have some new people coming that we want to introduce as well. If you'd like to just move around that way, say hello to the council on your way by.
On this way, yeah. Want a big picture?
Okay.
Turned looking camera.
Yeah. Okay, so we have certificates of appreciation as well for the candidates for the 2014 ambassadorship, and they are coming forward. And these don't seem to be alphabetical or in any particular order, so I'm going to have you come up, and then we'll call your names, and you can come and get your certificate. First one is Abby Nip from the far end. Okay. Thank you, Abby. Kausir Yusuf. Thank you. Rachel Whitaker. Thank you. Nicola Fileman. Thank you. Hannah Springer. Thank you, Hannah. Ibeliza Dominguez. And Jennifer Hernandez. Thank you. And we have a couple other certificates for people who weren't able to be here. Leah Bolt and Samantha Rolay. And we'd like to thank all of you. What your certificate says is an appreciation of your participation in the City of Richfield 35th Annual Fourth of July Activities as of a 2014-2015 Richfield Ambassador Candidate. The Richfield City Council hereby extends their sincere gratitude and congratulations. And I'm sure you all look forward to eating that corn and playing in the -- eating the spaghetti, and they really have a good time. I've seen them out when we -- when I used to march with the marching -- Richfield Marching Band, we'd be in the same parades, and they are really fun to watch and have a really fun event. So, we hope all of you get a chance to participate with the events leading up to it, and hopefully we'll see you back next year wearing your crowns. So, thank you so much.
All right.
And I do have a copy of the bunny with each of our current candidates. I will pass those out, so you may take one for each of you. Thank you.
And thank you. It's always nice to see them in here and to see them out in the community. Now, you'll recognize them out in the community when they're out there, right? Say hi.
Thank you.
Yes. Great, great organization to support, great things they do for young women. Next, we have the annual meeting of the Advisory Board of Health.
Hi, council members and Madam Mayor. My name is Erin Ricken, and I'm co-chair of the Advisory Board of Health. I want to say that 2013 was an amazing year with everybody. Most of our members are involved with so many different groups and activities throughout the city, which is phenomenal to have them out there and involved, and come back to each meeting with so much firsthand knowledge and information where we maybe are doing a great job, or we maybe we need to spend a little bit more time to improve in certain areas. I want to thank, obviously, all of our members because they're all volunteer members. They give so much of their time and their hours to come to the meetings and listen to what problems and concerns that we are having in the community or where we've grown. I also want to thank Jennifer, who has been our past co-chair or past chair for many years now, and her dedication to the board has very inspired, I think, most of the people on the board to get even more involved than what has originally started. And I also want to thank Betsy Osborne, our city liaison. Without her, I believe we would be a sinking ship. She provides us with very thought-provoking and informative conversations, and she is always there at a drop of a hat to get us the information that we need whenever we need it. Do you guys have any questions? Do you -- and I am understood that you guys all have a copy too there.
Yes, what are the highlights? Tell us some of the highlights out of the report.
Well, we were part of Penn Fest again this year, which was an amazing experience. We got rid of, I think we had two or three big crates of apples, and so all you had to do was come and hula hoop and have some fun with us and get up and move, and we got rid of all of our apples. So, then we had jugs of water for ourselves, so we started giving those away. And then when we ran out of that, we started just having people hula hoop just to have fun and just to get out and move and burn a couple calories without knowing it. So, that was probably our biggest highlight. We've also done a really good job when it comes to concession stands with the city having healthier food options there, and have seen surprisingly numbers very high of children making a better choice, and hopefully that will continue on. So, those, I think, were two big bright spots there.
Exciting. That's very nice.
Yeah.
It's wonderful. I'm the liaison, and that's a wonderful community. You guys always have great things going on, and you've done some great things with the ship dollars and some of the other dollars that we get in of grants. Thank you for your hard work. I think this is a great community asset.
Well, Mayor, I just wanted to say that, you know, getting a report like this is great because then we'll get to read it and it will retain more of the information, which is a lot easier than just hearing it.
The hard copy, the old-school hard copy style?
Absolutely.
It's a nice report looking.
Yeah, it is, and I appreciate the pictures, too.
Well, that would be our photographer, Jennifer. She's also our writer, and I believe Betsy was our editor in charge for it, so they get the credit.
I mean, you can tell that's -- I mean, this is a serious work here that you're committed to, and you've done a good job.
Thank you.
The whole commission has.
Thanks.
Other comments or questions? Thank you. It's always nice to hear the hard work you're doing.
Thank you.
And thanks to all those who serve. Appreciate it a lot.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Next, we have the council discussion. Under the council discussion is the Fourth of July Parade. Who's going to be marching in the parade this year? What are we doing? Tom, you going to be there?
Well, I'll be there. Do we need the golf cart again as a standby for those that get weak legs? Okay.
We could do electric vehicles or something, or golf cart or something. I walked it. I don't have a problem walking it.
Yeah, we had an electric vehicle from Honda.
Yes, yes. Bloomington Honda.
Well, it's a good thing Mr. Carter is here. Mr. Carter here.
All right, okay, all right. But it looks like everybody would like to participate. Council member Sandal?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, we're on. Please put in our application. I'll sign it as soon as we get it together. This is Hats Off to Hometown Hits, and council member Sandal already told me that she has quite a few things, so I'm going to let her go ahead and go first.
I'm going to get myself organized, so if someone else wants to go first, that's fine.
All right, you got some things? All right, Edwina, all right, you can go. Council member Garcia, please.
You've got -- should I do yours or you want to do yours?
Take them off. Go ahead.
Okay, here we go. See what you created, Susan? I mean, Susan was the one that initiated this Hats Off, so -- and I always have appreciated that because it highlights, you know, what a great job, you know, the whole community does. The first is the Open Streets at Penn Fest. That's going to be Sunday, September the 21st. So, you want to make sure you put that on your calendar because that's a lot of fun. And every year that they do it, I mean, it gets a lot more exciting and interesting. Then the second thing is that Lakewins Food Co-op is having a job fair, and that's going to be Thursday, May the 15th through the 17th, from 10:00 to 7:00 p.m., and that will be at their Eden Prairie office. And you can just Google that, Lakewins Foods Co-op, and go on their job fair. The next thing is Unity in the Community, which is Thursday, the 15th, which is this week. And that will be going on from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m., and that's going to be at Veterans Park. Now, okay, now we're on the fourth one. The Citywide Garage Sale, that's going to be May the 16th, the start day, and it'll be from 9:00 to 4:00. It'll be three full days, and I mean, you know, that'll be a lot of fun.
That's your personal favorite, isn't it?
Yes, absolutely. You know, I mean, this is --
It's been out.
You know, I pick out my wardrobe. And then, May the 26th, we've got the All Veterans Memorial. We're going to have honoring the veterans. That's going to be 2:00 to 4:00 at Veterans Park. And my assistant has something. Go ahead, assistant. Each one I have -- well, I'll wait and then you can. And then, again, if you look at the website, there's something called Commuter Challenge. And that started April the 1st, and will go through June the 30th. And if you look at that, their website, Commuter Challenge, it's really -- it's what it says it is. We want to get more people involved in participating and taking personal responsibility when it comes to commuting wherever they're going. So, whether it's bus, train, bike, carpool, teleworking, or walking, you know, look at that and take advantage of that. It's Commuter Challenge. And then Susan already did the Richfield Garden Center, Garden Club.
Flower plant sale.
Club. And then, don't forget Farmer's Market is open.
She's got the --
I'm sorry. Well...
You took Susan. You took all my joy. Okay.
Did I steal a few of them?
A lot of thunder.
A few, Edwina.
Sorry about that.
This is the Farmer's Market. It opens Saturday at Veterans Memorial Park, and it runs, which is at 64th and Portland, and it runs from May 17th through October 25th. Their hours are 7:00 in the morning till 12:00, and then in October, it's 8:00 to 12:00. And this is the other one. This is Wednesday's Farmer's Market, which is at 64th and Lyndale on the Lyndale Gardens site. And this is on Wednesdays, June 4th through September 10th. I think that's Wednesdays, if I remember correctly. 2:00 to 7:00, and it gives you a list of some of the things that are available. They have lots of baked goods, food items, fresh produce, et cetera. So, all of those are good events.
Excellent. I'm looking forward to Farmer's Market. Are you done? Do you have a list?
No, I'm done.
I know. Council member Elliot?
I was just turning my phone off. I was reminded by Edwina's inability to turn hers off.
I just got a new phone. I'm sorry.
You know, I just wanted to mention something that has come up several times in the five or six years I've been on the city council, and it's about the services provided by our public safety people, in this case particularly the fire department. LA Fitness, you know, the new facility over on 66th and Lyndale has an enormous number of clients that are there, and even on a Sunday morning, a week ago Sunday morning, I was there, and we had one of the members go down. I mean, just the immediate MI or something. I don't know what it was. They've got a D-Fib station there, and the staff is very good, but I think what really impressed me within about a minute, minute and a half, this individual had lost heartbeat and everything, and six of our firefighters showed up within two minutes of each other. And, you know, it was amazing to watch the coordination they had and the efforts they put into this, and it took them 27 minutes, but they brought this guy back, got him to the hospital, and the staff over there is pretty good about letting people know because everybody's concerned that he'd made it, that he had, I think, some stents put in everything. But the point I was trying to make is that that's a service that is paid for and provided by the City of Richfield to its constituents and its citizens, but there's a lot of people that pass through Richfield that end up with medical conditions that are also serviced by our people, and they don't look to see where you live or what your background is or anything else. What they're there to do is to save your life, and they did it in this situation. And I still find it amazing that we can be the first responders and in that case save a life, and I couldn't even count the number of times we saved lives. And yet, neither the healthcare providers or the powers that be that own the ambulance services and everything see any need to compensate us or to assist us in keeping, to keep those people available, and with the training they have and the ability to save lives. And I don't know who we need to talk to or what buttons we need to push, but we're always going to continue to maintain a staff that is out there that's going to -- that's dedicated to saving lives. And I think that at some point in time, someone has to recognize that and give us additional resources so we not only maintain that, but make it even better.
Thanks. That's great to share that. Thanks. Council member Sandal?
Oh, thank you.
Did you have any left?
I had one.
She had a long list, too.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to make an announcement this evening, and that is that I will not be seeking reelection in November. And I wanted to let people know who might be interested in running that the filings open Tuesday, May 20th, and they close on Tuesday, June 3rd, 2014. So, if you have an interest in running for election to the at-large city council seat, it's open. Go for it. And I just wanted to take a few minutes to talk about some of the things that have happened while I've served on the city council. I just have to take a little bit of credit.
You should.
So, I want -- I made a list just to see what was out there, and it's quite a few things, and that made me feel really good about it. Things that weren't here when I started, the Gramercy Co-op, the City Bella Building on Lyndale, Best Buy, Fortune 100 Company located in the City of Richfield, the Cedar Point Development with Target and Home Depot, the Kensington Development on 76th and Lyndale, the Castile Place, the townhomes that are located there, Main Street Village. Richfield Bloomington Honda is in the process of building a much enlarged campus, and I'll be happy to watch that as it goes forward. LA Fitness, the Lyndale Gardens Center, and the Lakewins Co-op, which is already underway. The Lyndale Plaza Apartments across the street. We also have lots of things dealing with roads because that was one of my passions, roads and transportation issues. We have two double-lane roundabouts in the City of Richfield that weren't here. We have the Three Rivers Park District Trail and Bike Paths that are going east and west through the city, and now north and south, and additional ones to come. We have the Richfield Parkway, which is being -- has been built, and we know now we'll have the intercity trail coming down from Minneapolis. We've adopted a complete streets policy, which will see brand-new layouts on Nicollet, Portland, 66th Street, which will make a huge difference in how our community looks as you drive through it. We have also expanded the ice arena, done wonderful swimming pool upgrades. We have a new maintenance facility over on the far east side, a new municipal building we're sitting in right now. We remodeled the Penn Central Fire Station, and we have two brand-new bridges, one on Penn Avenue and one on Lyndale Avenue. And we have airport noise remediation that we accomplished for our residents so they don't have to live with all of the airport noise at least all of the time. So, those are things I'm really proud about that have happened in Richfield. The one thing I regret that never happened was we never got our community center. And so, I'm encouraging the current council and any future council members to look at that because that is still a hole in our community. So, with that, I say thank you for all of the support I've received and the work with all of my council members over the years. It's been fun. I've enjoyed it.
That's an impressive list, very impressive list, where you will be missed in the city.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to say she forgot some. Every new building is going to have a bike rack.
Absolutely.
If you've been to the meetings, you know that she won't let the plans go by without a bike rack. I just wanted to reiterate on the Memorial Day Celebration, it's again Monday at 2:00. We have a beautiful... We have a beautiful memorial over there. In fact, generals that come visit say it's the next best thing to what's actually in D.C. And this one, we're going to actually have Walter Holm, who's the guest speaker, and they're going to be talking about the Merch Marines. And if you haven't heard, the Thirty-Fourth Infantry Red Bull Band, yet, you need to go to it. It is awesome, and I'm surprised we got them back again. They're just difficult to get, yeah, they're, they're just awesome. And Red, the yellow ribbon people will be over there along with the Memorial Day. And I wanted to thank the council for, we did a, they had an honor flight recently, and we sent the notes to the three citizens in Richfield that went on the honor flights and got good response back, thank you for doing that.
What the honor flight is, for those who would like to.
What the honor flight is, it's actually free for the veterans that go on it. But what they do is they're concentrating on World War II, because there's not many of them left. And it, they go ahead and apply, and the honor flight is an organization. But what they do is they fly them free to Washington, D.C. for the day. They, they get up like at five A.M., and I think they're back at ten-thirty. And they spend the day at Washington, D.C. visiting the memorials net. And it's just a trip some of them never could ever make without having this, you know, organization to help them. And I know the mayor's been gone, there's a sponsor and a few others. And they encourage sponsors to go with or, or guides. And they have to pay, but that also supports the flight, so, and I'm glad they're doing it.
It's all run by volunteers, too. And they get donations. So if you want to, and I think it was an honor for me to be an escort, if anybody wants to do this. And I know Ed Tom, one of our citizens, was just an escort. He came by and I got letters for folks, too. So I write letters to people, too, who go to this. I would recommend anybody doing this, as well as an escort going there. And if you know World War II veteran who hasn't seen those memorials, this is quite the trip. It is so impactful. It's really incredible.
I have one other comment, too.
Please, go ahead.
Just so everybody knows, the snow's gone, and I've been walking around, the grass is getting tall. So I would encourage everybody to fire up their lawnmowers and not put the grass in the street. But let's make Richfield look great on the curb appeal, because every year, we have issues with people that wait until the dandelions are about as tall as palm trees. And I just encourage everybody to check your neighborhood, help your neighbors out if they can't get their lawnmower started, and let's make Richfield look great.
Thanks. Okay, go ahead.
So I'm sorry.
But to our. You can't have another one, Edwina. I'm going to limit her.
Well, just for two things, just to remind people, they can pick up their garage sale list for the citywide garage sale at City Hall, community center, at the liquor stores. And then the other thing is, what were we talking about?
The honor flight? Veterans honor flight?
Uh, no, I forgot what it was.
You'll remember it after.
Oh, yes, yes, okay. When you're, you're talking about, about the yards and all of that. I, I will be doing, going around with, with Betsy Osborne and, and looking at, at some of the houses and, you know, that, that folks have called in and, and said, you know, something's going on, you know, the, the maintenance, and, you know, it looks just terrible, what have you. So we will be doing, you know, going around and looking at, at, you know, not only the main streets, but other streets and, and looking at the ordinance and see if we can maybe strengthen those ordinances a little bit more.
Okay. Yeah, we had a task force that did quite a bit. This is a, a shared thank you to Councilmember Elliott. This was, we were late, very late in the evening last week over at the Edina City Council. Many of you are aware, I saw Channel Five or saw on the news, the, the issues around the border of a particular project that's going up. And we, the city stand is that it's still too tall. We made some strides, we got some, some concessions, and there's still people moving on this. There's a couple more council meetings over at the city of Edina, at least attend those, just because they're our neighbors. But I want to say that we put the word out and we door knocked some, and we packed that city hall with Richfield residents that cared about it. And the other thing that is impressive is how kind and cordial they were to that city council as well. And that's what we want. We are good neighbors here. We may have disagreements, and we will, and this won't be the first one. But how we handle that and how we have civil discourse really does matter. It shows who we are as a city. So I was so impressed with everybody who came and how they spoke. And Councilmember, would you like to add something to that?
Nothing other than, than I work well in association with you, because anytime you're there next to me, cooler heads do prevail. I'm not real good at doing that myself.
You were great. We rehearsed ahead. You were great. At this time, I'd asked the council to approve the agenda with one amendment. We're going to move item six J to seven. Staff needs us, needs to talk about something on that one. So I'd ask for council approval.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The consent calendar, for those in the audience, contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, all the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been, have been approved, and no further action on these items will be necessary. Tonight's consent calendar contains several items. Let's start off with item A. Consideration of the approval of a resolution authorizing the Richfield Department of Public Safety to accept grant monies from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, the Justice Assistance Grant Program. Item B is consideration of approval of resolution authorizing the city council to affirm the monetary limits on municipal tort liability established by Minnesota statutes four sixty-six point oh four. Item number C, item C is consideration of the approval of a resolution authorizing partnership agreement between the city of Richfield and the Minnesota Department of Transportation for the purchase and storage of salt until June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Item D is consideration of the approval of a resolution authorizing the partnership agreement with the state of Minnesota Department of Transportation for the purchase of fuel until June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Item E is consideration of the approval of a work proposal from Short, Elliott, Hendrickson for engineering services to design the city's sanitary and water main utilities as part of the Sixty-Sixth Street Reconstruction Project between Sixteenth Avenue and Xerxes Avenue. Item F is consideration of the approval of an agreement between Hennepin County and the city of Richfield for funding soccer goals and equipment in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars. Item G is consideration of the approval of an agreement between the city of Richfield and Sprint Spectrum LP for a short-term lease for the use of Veterans Memorial Park as a temporary site for a mobile communications facility during the Fourth of July celebration. Item H is consideration of the approval of an agreement between the city of Richfield and the Richfield Foundation for the Richfield Foundation to act as a fiscal sponsor of donations received for the community van shell. Item I is consideration of the approval of an agreement between the city of Richfield and the Richfield Foundation for the Richfield Foundation to act as a fiscal sponsor of donations received for the Woodlake Nature Center. Item J, as the mayor indicated, is being removed. Item K is consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing an amended planned unit development, conditional use permit, and final development plan for Richfield Bloomington Honda. And finally, item L, consideration of the approval of a contract change order number two for the Richfield Ice Arena, the two thousand thirteen Locker Room Edition Project, in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred and eleven dollars. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
I'll move the calendar.
Second.
Is there discussion, a question?
I just have a question. Do we no longer fill up at the Hennepin County site for our fuel? And maybe I should have prompted you on this. Perme? We still do. Okay, because, yeah, okay. That, that answers my question. I thought maybe we cut that out completely. And I know we've had issues when one pump doesn't work and we're looking for another one. So that, that's a good idea, we got duplication and so.
Councilmember?
What I wanted to mention about, it's Richfield Bloomington Honda. If you remember many, many years ago, when I was in the council in the eighties, and you were, you know, to drive on the frontage road and, you know, you'd have all those, how many car dealerships that we have, up to four? And, you know, and one of, one of my things then was blacktop does not pay taxes. And we, and I got into a big squabble with all those folks. And, but, and look at what's there now. I mean, it's just, I mean, we, we really increased and improved our tracks, tax base and brought in some, you know, some good businesses into Richfield. But I wanted to, to applaud Mr. Carter, because I think that what, not, not only do you have your businesses here, but you're also a part of the community. You're part of the Richfield Chamber, you're part of one of our commissions. And I think that makes you, you know, really sensitive, because this isn't just our community, it's yours. And you've made that really apparent by, you know, you being such a booster of that Seventy-Seventh Street Tunnel. So, you know, I really have appreciated working with you.
Thank you. Other comments? Kudos. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We have a removal, and I'll give that to staff, since they took it off.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. Item J, which is consideration of the approval of first reading of an ordinance that would remove correct outdated terminology, et cetera, in the zoning ordinance, is, is something that is basically routine, except that there's a question that we need answered to move on to the second reading.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. As City Manager Devich said, this is mostly pretty routine stuff. You know, we're constantly, throughout the year, when something comes up in the zoning ordinance that doesn't make sense, we make a note of it. And then we try to come in once a year or so and, and make some cleanups. There really are, there's a bunch, I would say, maybe like fifteen or twenty cleanups this time around. But really, only three of them are of any substance. One is, we're suggesting that home occupations be allowed in accessory buildings and garages. And of course, this would continue to prohibit, you know, home occupations that would be a negative impact on the neighborhood, such as auto repair and those kinds of things. The second is screening of rooftop mechanicals. There was some ambiguity in how that was written, and we want to make sure that it's clear that mechanicals on the roof should be screened from all adjacent properties and all adjacent streets. The third one, which we're seeking a little bit more clarification on before we come back to the second reading, is in response to drive-through service, drive-through windows. And it's specifically in our mixed-use districts, which are primarily Penn Avenue, four ninety-four, and some parts of, of Sixty-Sixth and Lyndale. And right now, what our code says, it has two sentences that seem to be, say, two different things. The first sentence is that drive-up service must be part of a multi-tenant use, mixed-use development. That seems pretty clear. They, they can't be standalone, they have to be part of a larger development. The second sentence says, freestanding buildings shall not have drive-up facilities unless da, 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 da. Well, so the first sentence said you can't have them, the second sentence says you can if X, Y, and Z. Staff, when we read that, we're not sure what the intent was. This was written before, before either Melissa or I were on staff, I believe. Our, our preference would be the former, to say drive-up services would only be allowed as part of a mixed-use development. Just because of the nature of this being a mixed-use district, the, one of the purposes is walkability, not having the lot paved over with queuing and all the, the interactions between cars and, and people. Most of these sites in a mixed-use district are going to be a couple of things. One is they are going to be mixed-use. Secondly, they're usually going to be a planned unit development, which is over an acre. And that would allow you to have some variance in it. But like I said, before we moved on to the second reading, we just wanted to make sure that you were tracking with that and, and weren't feeling like, no, we'd like to see a drive-through service, you know, a, a fast-food place or a pharmacy or something be able to be a standalone in a mixed-use district.
And may I just ask a question? So if Walgreens, the hub, decided to separate itself to make a drive-through, would that still be part of a mixed-use development?
It would be part of mixed-use, and it would be, also probably be a planned unit development.
Okay, so it's still standalone, but with it, then that's okay?
Yeah.
I'm understanding that correctly.
I have a similar question. I'd had a conversation with the owner of Randy Z's, the car wash, over on Sixty-Sixth Street. And he had asked me about putting in a, a drive-through booth just to pay for the wash. So you didn't have, you know, if you weren't putting gas in and getting a ticket from the gas or going inside, they wanted to have a drive-through. Would, would that be prohibited under this new reading?
And you're talking about Eddie's.
Eddie Z's, I'm sorry, you're right.
You know, if that were on Penn, probably, but it's not in a mixed-use district. So on that one, in the, in the particular of his site, it wouldn't be affected.
Okay.
But we can allow variances, can we not?
You can allow variances. You know, there's some criteria you have to meet, that there's a hardship and other things.
That's pretty easy on these, some of these lots in Richfield.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sandal, then.
I had a question. And how did CVS drive-through fit into all of this?
Well, CVS is attached to, to Ark Valley Village. Or it's.
No, it's not anymore.
It's not attached, but it's part and parcel, it's all one development, and it's a planned unit development.
Okay, so it was a P.U.D. So that's how that worked.
Tom?
Okay, so that kind of answers.
Yeah, I mean, really, it's, it's talking about things that happen in isolation, you know, some small lot and not part of a P.U.D. and not attached to any other building. And, you know, I guess we, I don't know that we feel strongly enough about it one way or the other. I, I stated our preference, but if, if the council saw it the other way, that's something we could definitely.
With the allowance of variances, I think I can go ahead and move with staff's recommendation. What does other people feel okay for that?
Well, like Popeyes, that's not separate, you know, when you look at all these different restaurants, they're considered part of the Rainbow, Rainbow Complex, or?
No, Popeyes would not be, that's a good example. You know, if Popeyes were to come, you know, fresh today, that it was something else before Popeyes, and then they came in. A couple of things. One is, it is, it is a freestanding building, it's not attached to anything else. And secondly, it's, it's under different ownership than the rest of the hub. So I, I doubt that they would come in with a P.U.D. for the entire shopping center. That's one place where somebody could come in and make an, an argument, maybe on a variance, saying that this is unusual in that even though the ownership is different, really, it functions as a, as an integrated development. It should be considered that way, you know, I don't know.
Would Burger King also fall under that, too, then? Because you got Burger King's, it's got the, you know, the, the other store attached to it.
That's a mixed use, because it's got all those, it's got GNC and offices above.
So Popeyes is an issue, and we'd have to watch that. So they couldn't really sell it to anybody else and then put it in a different, if it went back to Kentucky Fried Chicken, I guess we'd have trouble.
And, you know, just to give, throw a few more examples out there. You know, there are places along four ninety-four, let's say Elson's Garage, if they wanted to sell to McDonald's. That's zone mixed-use. In that case, the answer would be McDonald's. You either need to be part of a, a multi-tenant building, you need to have a bank or something attached to you, or, or you wouldn't be allowed in a mixed-use with a drive-through as a standalone building.
So I have another question, then Taco Bell, how did that work?
Because it replaced an existing, a prior non-conforming use, it replaced the Burger King.
Okay.
And a lot of those would actually do that, too.
Little muddy, I think.
Okay, now, now let's talk about banks with their drive-through. How does that work?
It would work the same.
Is that it, are they, are those banks that we have? We have a number of them with drive-throughs. Are they self-contained parcels, or they're in mixed-use districts? Wells Fargo on Nicollet.
Well, that's not, that's not a mixed-use district. The one I could think of, I don't know, does Bank of the Isles on, on Penn have a drive-through?
I don't believe so.
You know, the Credit Union.
RCBU?
Credit Union has one.
Credit Union, that would be an example of one that would not be allowed unless they had some mix of uses.
Maybe we need to look at the criteria that we look at a little bit further. Maybe staff could look at some of this for some of these uses, because I wouldn't have wanted to turn down RCBU.
Yeah. Well, what, what we'll do then, in the staff report the next time around, is identify existing uses that would be made legally non-conforming if, if we were to do this. Do you see an example of, you know, gosh, you know, these are all things that if they were coming in new today, we'd sure like them, or no, you know, we, we would rather have these be part of a larger development.
Okay, so you'll come back, so we'll just put a stay on this one?
Yeah, you know, as part of the second reading, we will.
Oh, part of the second reading? Okay, so we still need to move it as a first reading?
Yeah, I think that would be the way to go. And if there's still some questions at the second reading, we'd always continue it.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Okay, I'll move item six J for approval. Have a second? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose? More comments?
Opposed? More comments? We'll move on. Thank you. Thank you, staff. Edrina Garcia, you have the next item.
Agenda item number eight is a public hearing to consider a request for a conditional use permit and variances to allow construction of a 75-foot antenna tower and accessory structure at the Richfield Public Works Building. Buell Consulting on behalf of Verizon Wireless has applied for a conditional use permit and variances to allow construction of a new telecommunication tower at the Richfield Public Works facility. The proposed tower is intended to improve wireless communication capacity in the area. Telecommunication towers are a conditionally permitted use in the general commercial, commercial zoning district. The proposed tower meets all the requirements of the zoning code. In addition to the tower, the applicant is proposing an accessory building to house communication equipment. The applicant is requesting two variances related to the accessory building. City staff and the planning commission have reviewed the proposal and recommended approval of the CUP, of conditional use permit and variances. In addition, the city and Buell Consulting on behalf of Verizon Wireless are currently in negotiations to allow for the construction of a telecommunications tower and to lease land on city property. Upon completion of negotiations, the lease will be brought before the city council for So at this time, I don't know if you want to open the public hearing?
Yes, we'll open the public hearing for anybody who would like to come forward to talk to this. Do we have any representatives here? Please state your name and your address.
Good evening. Rob Viera, 15, Buell Consulting, 5096 Merrimack Lane North, Plymouth, Minnesota, 55446. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does staff have questions? Any questions on this and doing this? No, I, we've done this before and I think that, you know, we'll look at all the considerations and see if it, it looks like it all fits in, but so far?
No, I think the, I think staff has provided, you know, the whole, the policy background and.
We have a good layout. We have a layout of where it is on the map. And I think where its location is certainly not going to disturb anybody where it's at. I'm sure city staff would not have recommended it otherwise. And we've seen the proposed plan. Counsel?
I would just comment, we can always use additional income. We thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to come forward to speak on this? Thank you for coming. Anyone? I'll entertain a motion to close.
Second.
I'll need a motion.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye? The public hearing is closed. Counselmember?
So I will move that we, that we approve the conditional use permit and variances to allow, to allow construction of the 75-foot telecommunication tower and accessory structure at 1901 66th Street East.
I'll second. Any other discussion, counsel? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries. The next item is approval of construction of the Metropolitan Council Livable Communities Transit Oriented Development Grant related to improvements at the Lindell Garden site. So, and I see our folks are here. On April 25th, 2012, the City of Richfield was awarded $1.5 million through the Metropolitan Council Livable Communities Act Transit Oriented Development Grant Program for the Richfield Lindell Garden Project. These funds are for the creation of placemaking elements and park connections, including bicycle and pedestrian connections on the project site. The Lindell Gardens redevelopment project is located at 6401 Lindell Avenue. The project includes Lakewins Natural Foods Grocery Store and is proposed, proposal includes approximately 151 units of multifamily rental housing, 10,000 square feet of restaurant and retail, and a number of quasi-public amenities. Lakewins Grocery is currently under construction with a completion date of June this year. The apartments and restaurant retail are anticipated to begin construction later this year and next year. The Cornerstone Group, project developer, and Lakewins Grocery are eager to begin the quasi-public improvements to allow for public use of the site this year. Additionally, the grant is set to expire in April 30th, 2015. The grant funding is predicted, is predicated on the completion of the entire project, grocery, housing, retail. Therefore, if the developer does not construct the housing and retail in association with the grant, the city would potentially be liable to repay the grant. However, the Met Council has stated that they have never required the repayment of a grant, even when a project failed to be completed. As such, the Cornerstone Group is seeking approval of the city, from the city, to begin this construction of the placemaking elements and park connections prior to the construction of the housing and retail part. So, and I will make a, a motion so that we can have a discussion. Let me move this.
I'll second.
I didn't make the motion.
Oh, I thought you just said you did.
I made the motion to approve, I didn't read it, approved construction of Metropolitan Livable Communities Transit Oriented Development Grant related to improvements at Lindell Garden.
I will now second.
Okay. So with that, does staff have further comments?
I don't have any specific comments, other than Beth Reitz from the Met Council is here, as well as Beth Pfeiffer and Colleen Carey from Cornerstone.
Would you like to come up and talk about the improvements? And it's nice to see our Met Council here.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, thank you for having us back here tonight to talk to you about this. I brought an illustration tonight to show what the extent of construction would be if we receive your permission tonight to move forward with this project. It's, it looks pink to me from here, but reddish area, this area here, shows the limits of construction for what we're termed the quasi-public improvements. I think we're using the word quasi because this is improvements, public, improvements related to the public that are on private land. However, part of this work does include a new bridge connection to the existing Richfield Lake Trail. And it does include the beginning of the path connection at the water's edge and around the back of the stage, which will be claimed, deeded back to the City of Richfield and become part of the public part. So these are really intended to be for the benefit of the public, even though a portion of them fall on private land. And as you can see by where the bridge connection is, it does lead up into Lakewins' front door. So with the opening of Lakewins this June, they're very excited about the possibility of this moving forward at a faster pace than the rest of the development to allow their guests and patrons to be able to access the lake, which was a big part of this planned unit development. Also, I know in the, in the announcements at the beginning, the Richfield Farmers Market, the Wednesday Market that we host at Lindell Gardens was mentioned. And I did just confirm with the market staff today that will be starting on June 4th. Wednesday is from 2:00 to 7:00. And actually, in anticipation of the potential construction on this area of the site, we are going to be hosting the market this year down on this end of the site, so that if there is construction going on, we stay away from that. And we also have a more compatible use with folks shopping at Lakewins. Lakewins is very excited to help sponsor that. And they think that it's, it's great for them and their customers as well. The yellow lines on the plan indicate the area around the future construction that's needed to stage and construct those buildings. So what we wanted to show you there was that the construction of the improvements, the quasi-public improvements, will not be impacted by the construction of the permanent pieces. We wanted to make sure that we're not spending money to put the stage and things in place and then risking the beauty of those things when we do construction later on. So we very purposely define the area that would be constructed in this first pass, so that it will not be affected by the rest of the construction that happens at a later date. Do you have any questions from myself, Colleen or Beth?
I've got a couple of questions. One in regards to the dotted lines. When I look at that and knowing what's on the backside of the proposed apartment complex, where are the materials and the trucks and everything accessing the construction zone for the apartments going to access and egress from the lot?
Yes, they will be coming in and out of the lot on this side. Currently, there's a small building here that we use as a project office, and that will be demolished as part of the redevelopment project as approved in the PUD. So the truck traffic will, for the most part, come in and out of this side of the site.
And the, are you going to fence the construction area for the apartment building?
Yes. Yes, they will have construction fencing, silt fencing, as required by permits.
All the construction materials, everything will be contained within that line?
Yeah, we will, we, you know, we will want to make this a safe site. So we want to make sure that whatever we build is very safe. And we will work our, with our contractor, Weiss Builders, to make sure that during the times when construction is happening and there is activities at the stage or on the trails, that that is safe and secure.
And so you've contracted, or at least have a provisional contract with Weiss Builders to do the project?
That's right. We, we don't have a signed contract yet, but we've been working with them and working towards it.
Okay. Have you given them plans and received bids?
Yes.
Okay. Have we seen those, the plans?
The plans for the total development?
For the construction of the apartment complex?
They, they were part of the PUD application and approval.
Okay. Couple other questions, if I may. The, the staff report indicates that the grant is set to, set to expire in April 30th, 2015. I can't determine whether or not that means that the money has to be granted before then, or does the construction have to be underway and/or completed by April 15th, 2015?
Beth can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe that it's that you have to begin by that date. There's also a provision in the grant to allow for a two-year extension up to, up until April 30th of 2017. But Beth, can you tell me if I got that right?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Beth Reitz from the Metropolitan Council, and that is correct. The, the council has provided for a maximum of five years total for the grants. So as long as there is progress being made towards the outcomes, an administrative extension of two years can be depended upon.
So it's, my assumption is then that, that the request for us to, to accept the funding now is to at least get some of the quasi-public stuff underway and started. Is that correct? I'm, I'm sorry. I'm jumping back and forth through the two.
That's correct. I think really the primary purpose is that Lakewins is, is opening this June. And the bulk of the improvements that we'll do, we'd be starting with would benefit that part of the development, which is, you know, all, this was all proved as one PUD, especially that new bridge connection and the trail connection. So really wanting to give the most impact to the opening of that location. And if we start the improvements this, yet this spring, early summer, we will, our goal would be to complete them by this fall. The longest lead time is the bridge. So it will be determined, it will depend on how quickly the bridge gets manufactured and out here. But then the goal would be that by next spring, we could actually be actively using the site versus if we wait and start it, if we miss this season, this construction season for those improvements, we're talking about potentially not being able to use it for two more years.
Okay. If, so, so what you're anticipating now, the quasi-public, which is the bridge and the pedestrian connection?
And the stage.
And the stage. All right. And so between the backside of Lakewins and the quasi-public development is going to be your proposed retail development. How are you going to do that construction in between those two if they both are completed? I'm just trying to figure out your, your timing and your sequencing. You're building the, the bridge and the pedestrian connection, and yet you've got a 10,000-square-foot building, you've got to build in between that and the backside of Lakewins. How, how are you going to do that without causing damage to the connections?
Right. That's why the, what we're building out is contained only within the pink dashlines. And the area that they need in order to build out that retail in the front is contained within the yellow. So we're working very closely with Weiss to make sure that when we do this, it, it does work. And we very strategically planned how much of the build-out could be done at this time to not affect.
Okay. And, and can you tell me if, have you bid out the, the connections, the bridge and the pedestrian connections?
Yes.
What's, what's that come in at?
Well, a portion of the million, 1.5 million dollars were towards acquisition. So those funds have already been spent. There's just over $1 million remaining. And we are at, right at the $1 million budget.
Okay. So all of the grant, all of the grant monies then will be used for this particular part of the project, but.
Correct.
Continue, and understanding the Met Council has indicated they've never tried to recover grant money. So we can get this paid for, but if, if something happens further down the road, we're, we're reliant on the Met Council's good graces in forgiving the grant. Is that correct?
Mayor, councilmembers, yes. Certainly, the, the, the council anticipates and plans for the grant money to be patient capital, recognizing that in particular, projects such as this, that exemplify the livable communities demonstration goals of being mixed-use, mixed-use, mixed income, mixed types of, of housing, and that also have the live, work, and play concept are, are very difficult and take a lot of time to put together. And therefore, the five-year grant period is, with that in mind, it is also the council's understanding that cities are working in good faith, that they are doing all of the things that they can do to bring about successful projects. And in the very rare occasion that everything was done by the city to accomplish a grant, but was unable to deliver a part of the outcomes, while the council's grant agreement provides for the ability to claw back, so to speak, it would only be done under very unusual circumstances where the council determined that a city had not been acting in good faith.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate those comments and it, and, you know, it, I think it's the way we should all work. With that being said, the, the legal side of me still requires a question of city attorney in regards to, are we past the ability of negotiating or writing up a hold harmless indemnification agreement in regards to, to accepting this grant money?
Mayor and council, we would have to review the, the contract. I, I don't know that there's a specific deadline that this would have to be approved tonight. I can, maybe the representatives can speak to that. But if, if we needed to propose some language, if the council wants staff to pursue that, we can certainly take a look at it.
I sincerely hope and believe that, that it's not going to become necessary for us to ever employ it. But I, I just, for, for the sake of the citizens, I think if we can, if we can negotiate one and put it on paper, I would appreciate it on behalf of the city.
Mayor, councilmembers, I would also certainly understand what you're saying, councilmember. I just want to add to that, that certainly the residential component of this project is one of the outcomes. It is certainly not the only outcome. And so the other thing I think that would be, something that would be taken into consideration is looking at how many and what proportion of the outcomes were accomplished in any consideration of repayment, if that ever were to be deployed. Again, it has never, there have been, there have been other LCA-funded projects where, for one reason or another, the entire project or all outcomes have not been accomplished. And the council has never, in its history of the LCA program since 1995, has ever deployed its ability to have money repaid.
And, and once again, I certainly appreciate that. And I don't anticipate any of the, the weird, unusual catastrophic consequences coming to, to bear that, that's going to prohibit Cornerstone prohibit Cornerstone from finishing this project. I'm just asking for the say to the citizens whether or not it's possible. I'm not saying we need it. I mean, just, I mean, I just, I just want to make sure that we've got whatever protections we need, because unusual things happen, that's...
Let's ask our city attorney. Do you feel comfortable with moving forward the, the way it is? This is our city.
Madam Mayor and council, I, you know, I would have to go back and review the agreement with this discussion in mind to give an opinion as to whether or not I feel the city is, is covered. It sounds to me as though the, the intent is, is clear as to what that's, you know, what the Metropolitan Council has in mind. But with, with respect to the specific language, I would need to go back and with this context now in mind, determine whether or not I felt the city was protected just with respect to the, to the plain language of the agreement. I understand what the representatives are saying, but I think it would require a little additional review on my part.
With that being said, and once again, I may have not heard if, if time is of the essence in regards to getting this grant out, because I do not want to stand in the way of, of having the project move forward. On the other hand, you, you can recognize my concerns for the citizen, and I, and I have no reason to disbelieve everything I've heard here tonight, or to, to believe that there's going to be some catastrophic event that takes place that prevents Cornerstone from finishing what we've all been looking forward to for the last two and a half years. So, so once again, I, based on what Ms. Techen said and, and the fact that we've got no reason, or I've got no reason to, to be overly concerned. And, and so with that, I will, will, I'm on record as just indicating if we can get it without interfering or stopping the beginning of the project because we've all been waiting for it to get started. I don't want to delay it, but I also want to, if, if it's possible to get it done, let's do it. If it's going to create a hardship or back off on your, your sequencing and timing of the project, then I'm, I'm not going to throw that barrier up in front of you.
Beth, could you, or Colleen?
I can speak to the time is of the essence part of it. I think time is of the essence more in being able to deliver the public good part of this project, and being able to deliver that for this, this fall and next season when a portion of the project is already open. It, it would be beneficial to have your support this evening. Our schedule, if, if we receive your okay tonight, we would complete the revised drawings. We have to revise the drawings slightly since we will be only building a portion of it at this point in time, and there's some civil engineering work that needs to happen with that. And if we really push our team to stay on track, our goal would be to submit to Rich, to the city for permit review by the end of May, which would have us starting construction at our earliest by the middle of June. And we're anticipating, based on the lead time for the bridge, approximately sixteen weeks of construction. So if we didn't have approval tonight, I think we would likely miss this building season, and then we really would be back here talking about this next year.
So maybe, maybe the proper thing to do, it's been moved and seconded, take the vote, and I can, I can vote however I choose.
Yes, okay. Other council member questions? I, we have such a great relationship with the Met Council, I'm willing to move forward with this. I understand your concerns, council member, but I think we have a great relationship here. Council member stand up.
I just had a question, as long as we have the developers in. What's your timeline on the two pieces in the dashed yellow lines for both multifamily housing and the future retail? Which, is one come before the other? Is there some timeline we, that would be helpful to know?
Both come at the same time. So the remainder of the site would be built out, and our, our goal is to have the remainder of the site built in one project, and we're working with some financial commitments right now that would get us to, our goal is to have that started by the end of twenty fourteen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well...
Council member?
You know, I just, you know, I'm very comfortable with what Met Council said, and the other thing about the timing, you know, I, I think everybody knows that time is money. And so, you know, I think, I think everything will be done to, to the deadlines, but to work to get there before. So I, I, I think you're doing, you know, you're doing the best you can.
I just want to thank you for adding all these great public amenities, which you didn't really have to do, but it made the project fabulous and special, and it will not be like anything else we have. Thank you.
But having said that too, I also think that council member Elliot is, you know, keeps us on our toes. And, and, you know, and I think, and I appreciate that because I, I think that, you know, we, we can, we've got to safeguard our interest.
You're, you're good strong word. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Thank you for coming with the presentation tonight. We really appreciate it. Colleen, would you...
Could I just give one little update? This is, I'm Colleen Carey from the Cornerstone Group. I think you maybe know that by this point. I just wanted to give you an update after the work session that we had. We have proceeded down the track that I was describing in terms of the financing alternative and have raised about, or secured preliminary commitments from about, for about fifty percent of that, and we have meetings lined up for the, the rest of the money. You know, we may or may not get that to happen in exactly the timeframe that we want, but we've made quite a bit of progress in the last few weeks. So we're feeling good about that.
Oh, that's great to hear. Thanks.
And can I ask you to stay for a little while afterward so I can talk to you about a totally different issue?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
City manager's report.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I really don't have a specific report. Just to simply say again that, excuse me, that, you know, all of the hard work that, that we have done, and I, I say that we collectively as a city, as city council, are, are representatives, especially Representative Linda Slocum, who is carrying a heavy load over there for, for us, and Senator Wickland, who's worked on this very heavily, and, and also, of course, our other representatives and, and Senator Forrest Ray. I, I think we're, we are, we're in the game for the bonding bill now. You know, I don't know what this last hiccup in the bonding bill, what that's going to mean. I, I can only believe that it's going to get resolved one way or the other. I don't know which way, but it's going to get resolved. But this, the progress that we've made so far with the bonding bill and getting funding for the Seventy-seventh Street underpass, I think, and mayor, you might, you might agree, is even, well, certainly more than I expected. I mean, every, everybody told us that when we started, it was going to be a huge, 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 huge undertaking to get that funding, and some people didn't believe we'd ever get anything. While it hasn't happened yet, but this is the most excited I could ever be about looking at the hopeful part of an underpass, which would mean so much.
Watch it, they are in conference committees right now, and I have not gotten any kind of indication from, and Representative Slocum is carrying the water. This is her baby, and she is fighting for us and fighting for it. And it's still there. So if it had been pulled or anything like this, I would have gotten an email or a text message, and I have heard nothing. So I'm kind of going on this course of no good, no news is good news, as they hash out the bonding bill. So we will see when it all comes out in the wash. I suspect Richfield will get something.
Yeah, so, you know, Richfield, we, we do have a lot riding on that bonding bill, and if, if it does come to pass, I mean, it's the next big wow for Richfield, and I mean, a real big wow.
I want to think, because when I decided to take this on with Linda, I, we pulled out the stops, and I said, all right, we're going to run for it this time. And, and I know it was kind of like, oh, again, again, and staff has opened up and come to meetings, they have presented great diagrams, drawings, all kinds of information they've pulled together. The staff here at the city has been phenomenal in supporting us and Linda Slocum. Thank you.
Well, I, I just want to say that, you know, when, when something like this happens, you have to babysit the bill.
Yes.
And that means that you're, you know, you're on it, and you lose sleep, and you go hungry, and, and all of those things, but it has to be done.
Yeah.
And she's committed to that.
Yes, yes. Council member?
And it was one of the topics this morning at the chamber meeting, the benefits of having that tunnel done and the possibility of it hap, coming soon, so.
I think it's might be...
It'll affect the whole city.
Yeah, well, and you've been a real advocate for it too. Thank you.
Claims and payroll.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, everyone. Call this meeting adjourned.